This is our first virtual city council meeting. I'm going to encourage anybody who is not speaking to keep your, to keep your computers on mute. Welcome. Thank you so much. I know this probably took a lot for some and for others, this was fairly seamless. But I appreciate you guys being in attendance. I know we're certainly, if not the only bodies, one of the few bodies throughout the Commonwealth, to host a virtual meeting. So you ought to give yourselves a round of applause before we get started. So, so, so thank you. And to those watching at home, please bear with us. This is our first virtual meeting, so the likelihood is really high that we're going to have some technical difficulties. So we apologize in advance. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? And if everybody before she calls the roll can just unmute, so that you can say that you are present. Madam Clerk, the show is on you.
Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present Counsel Whitfield.
Here.
And Counsel Davila.
Present.
Present Counsel Fenton.
Present.
Present Counsel Corin.
Present.
Present Counsel Ramos.
Present.
Present Counsel Walsh. Present Counsel Williams. Assistant Counsel Allen.
Present.
Present Counsel Letterman.
Present.
Present Counsel Edwards.
Present.
Present Counsel Brown.
Present.
Present Counsel Earth.
Present. So again, um, thank you everyone so much for being here. You'll notice that Counselor Williams is not in attendance with us this evening. I am sad to report that Counselor Williams' cousin passed away on Sunday morning. That was also a son and our former colleague and also my, my close friend. And so if we could just have a moment of silence in honor of Kamari Williams, it would be greatly appreciated. He was a role model for so many. He was a coach at SIT Tech. We lost someone who was so, had such a bright future entirely too early. So if we could dedicate this moment of silence to Kamari Williams as well as Marcus Williams and the entire Williams and Bass family at this moment. Thank you. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Base of America.
And to the Republic.
Which is standing.
One nation under God.
Visable.
Liberty for all.
For all.
That might've been a bit difficult for folks to understand who are listening at home. Next time, we'll, we'll try to be in unison. So the first item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, can you please call that?
I have February revenue versus expenditure.
TJ, uh, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, TJ Plant, CAFO, 42 Darfield Street, Springfield. Uh, this first item is the expenditure report through February. As you know, this is the last month, last four months before we started to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. Things were on track, but now we get to monitor cash flow closely based upon what's happened the last month or so. But you know, definitely we, we collected 11.9 million in real estate property tax for the third quarter, 3.2 million in motor vehicle excise tax in February. Snow and ice is complete, closing out that budget. We made our debt service payment total of $20.5 million for debt service so far. So generally speaking, we were on track and we still, right now, we're monitoring the revenue every day based upon what loss of revenue we experienced throughout our line of the pandemic lasts.
Thank you TJ. So counselors, how we're going to handle questions is if you could just raise your hand or hit the raise your hand button on your screen and what I will do is I will scroll down in the event there are any questions. Does anybody need a refresher of the raise your hand button on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, Brendan. Good to actually see you now, Counsel Edward. Uh, either Brendan or Steve. Can we have you give us a refresher of the raise your hand button? Okay. Is there, being that Brendan and Steve?
So, um, Mr. President, I apologize for cutting in. Right there, if you're on your iPads, when you select onto your screen on your right-hand side, there's a a, a, a button that says more. You'll press more and then from there it'll pop up another screen and right there about four, four items down, you'll see raise, you'll see raise hand and you can tap on raise hand and it'll alert the host that you have your hand raised. So then we're not jumping all over each other so we can get a thought out or, or a question and that's what it is. And if you're at home, it'll be at the bottom of your screen on your laptop. I, I think I said that right.
Yeah, I said, this is Steve jumping in. Uh, what you're going to want to look for is click on, if you're on your computer, click on the participants button on the bottom. And then when you look to your right, you're going to see a list of everybody's name. And then you're going to see below everybody's name, there's two fields that you can click. One says mute me and the other says raise hand. I just raised my hand now. I don't know if you can see that. And now I'm clicking on it again. And that's how that works. Let me know if that clarifies things.
That does clarify things, certainly for me. Uh, if there are no further questions, we will go to the hands raised. If somebody is having an issue raising their hand, then obviously you can interject at, at the time that you deem fit. Counselor Letterman followed by Counselor Davila.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you TJ and the whole team for everything that you're doing to keep us going through this. TJ, I'm wondering if you can just speak briefly on how the pandemic has impacted revenues in recent weeks? And also what we might have spent thus far that we think we might be able to recover through reimbursement?
A good, great question. So as of right now, we spent just over $600,000 in the deficit spending across all departments. That's going to grow as we continue to provide services where they're needed. And we've actually, well, at the same time last year, fiscal year wise, we've lost about just over a million dollars in revenue, a million and $38,000 or so, a million and $70,000 in revenue based on what we would have brought in based on last year.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Davila?
Uh, no question. We're just practicing.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing, seeing none. All those in favor?
Counsel Whitfield, Counsel Whitfield is raising her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Whitfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I know this is new. Thanks everyone for the hard work. Um, TJ, the revenue loss, is it from a specific department?
No, it's across all permits, all fees and all the things that normally happen, you know, that take out all those, that revenue. We anticipate additional revenue being lost at some point, whether it's state aid or other bigger categories for the FY21 budget. But we're not sure exactly how that's going to shake out yet.
Thank you.
Counselor Gomez, did I see your hand up? Are there any further questions from the council? Counselor Letterman, sorry. I do see your hand up. Counsel Letterman, on you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just kind of following up on that. And I, I mean, I presume there'll be some committee meetings on this in the future, but will there be any way for us to, I know we can recoup some of the deficit spending, but do we anticipate any leap down the line to try to make sure that this revenue that we're losing now as a result of the pandemic doesn't have, you know, budget impacts in the coming fiscal year or, or otherwise?
Now, that is what we're, so we're tracking all expenditures and all lost revenue. Uh, we are contracting with Josh Norman, uh, who was our, our contracted employee that allowed us to recoup all the money from the tornado and make sure that we were made whole. Uh, and he's going to be with us again to help us with the disaster recovery and the, uh, post-disaster recovery aspects of, of the project. Let me call it a project. Sorry. That's a tornado stuff, but, uh, of the pandemic. So we are reasonably assured we'll get the money from FEMA at some point. It just may take a little while. Um, right now, but we're monitoring most closely is the state aid. They're doing revised budget estimates this week on, I believe it's actually tomorrow, uh, with the consensus revenue may get adjusted. And the state has lost upwards of $3 billion worth of revenue for annualized amount for FY21. So, um, that's ahead of us.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. If I could just remind counselors to please mute your mics when you are not speaking. I see Counselor Davila's hand raised. Counselor Davila, do you have a question at this time?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, TJ, just to be clear, uh, the report that we have, uh, that that doesn't, that does include the money that we're not, unfortunately, we're not paying out to, um, to the bus drivers?
Uh, we're, uh, Solicitor and I are working through solutions as it relates to DESI's guidance to pay all contracted employees during the pandemic. And we've got some things that we've worked out and, um, we're still not clear that DESI has the authority to mandate us to pay, lend us for services not rendered, National law chapter 44, uh, and National law chapter 41 are both pretty clear that we shouldn't be paying. So it was just a matter of, is it, are we really sure we're going to get this money back if we pay it? So we're definitely working through some of those things, Counselor.
So the money, the numbers that we see does not reflect any payments?
Right. This is due February. So that doesn't reflect anything that happened in March or not early April.
Alright, thank you TJ.
Alright, uh, thank you, Counselor Davila. Are there any other questions from counselors? Seeing no other hands raised, I'm going to unmute everyone. All those in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. The ayes have it, the report is accepted. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
I have here a HUD Continuum of Care Grant, $4,229,898.
Are we joined by Helen, Commissioner Helen Collin Harris? Oops.
She is there.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I think I, I think I muted everyone, which included you guys as well. Commissioner?
That grant does not belong to me.
Okay, that is not yours. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can we highlight the grants, um, that belong to the Commissioner and what we'll do is we will get the Commissioner out of there immediately, uh, being that she has, I would imagine, a ton of work to do and is doing an excellent job for the city of Springfield.
Commissioner, uh, Helen is, yeah, so item four.
Yeah.
So you guys, you know, get down to the, um, on the state of $53,000 from the, uh, healthcare. Yeah, item four, item seven, and it looks like item 10?
So without objection, um, without objection, uh, if we could take item four, item seven, and item 10 out of order so that the Commissioner can get back to doing the great work that she's doing for the city, it would be greatly appreciated. Camille, can you please call those items on the agenda?
Sure. Item number four, Health Services for the Homeless Grant No Match, $2,244,207.
Thank you, counselors. And I must say, you all look amazing. I love this. Thank you. So, um, that item is our Health Services for the Homeless Grant. It's our federal grant from, for our health center. I come before you every year with this grant. It provides medical, dental, and behavioral health services for the health center.
Are there any questions from the council regarding this grant? Okay. Seeing none, I will unmute everyone. All those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
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 Yay, the ayes have it. I'm sorry? Was there?
That was the late aye.
Okay, that was, I'm sorry. It was a late aye. Okay. Uh, the grant is approved.
Thank you.
Will you please call item number seven on the agenda?
I have a Critical Services Call COVID-19 Grant, $200,000.
Thank you. Uh, so the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Department of Public Health has awarded us $200,000 to, um, get through this very difficult pandemic. The money will be used for staffing. As you might imagine, we are going to need to hire additional staff to be able to particularly nursing services and other, um, medical providers who might be necessary as well as supplies. So the, uh, when you heard the governor announce a $5 billion grant for Boards of Health, that money is split up across the Commonwealth. Most, um, cities and towns got $200,000 with the exception of the, uh, of Boston who got $500,000.
Okay. Are there any questions from counselors? Counselor Gomez, I see you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. I was, I was putting myself off and mute. Um, yes, Helen, um, question on this grant. Is this, uh, these employees that, uh, looking towards to hire, are they going to be over on Worthington Street on those tents that we had created for Friends of the Homeless? Is, is, are we going to be utilizing that money for, for that? That we're doing over there with the Friends of the Homeless?
That is not the primary purpose of this grant. The primary purpose of this grant was really Boards of Health and what do Boards of Health need to be able to, for example, contact tracing? That's going to take a lot of time and a lot of staff. But calling up individuals who are, um, have positive results and making sure that they are doing what's necessary in order to stay, and to order to get healthy, uh, to reach out to family members. So this grant was specific for Boards of Health. Now, will we use it for the tent of, there may be, that may happen, but that was not the primary purpose of the allocation.
Alright, thank you so much. It's just, you were talking about hiring and employees. I just wanted to get a better understanding of what were the employees that you hired with this, this money? Well, thank you for, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, uh, you mentioned for supplies. Is that, is that PPE sort of the question, out of the realm of this grant, or can some of that money be used as PPE if it's necessary?
Yes, we have ordered PPE. We've ordered thermometers. We've ordered gas. We've ordered everything that might be necessary for us to have in our clinics to be able to manage this. So yes, PPE is certainly what we've ordered. We've not gotten it yet. Those thermometers where you can take the temperature at a distance. I mean, when we talk about social distancing or physical distancing from each other, that brings it to a different realm of our ability, our supply ability. We just have to have the supplies on hand to be able to manage even from a distance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Are there any other questions from counselors regarding this grant? Seeing no hands waved. All those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
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 Say nay. The ayes have it. The grant is accepted. Commissioner, do you not have item number nine? Is that not yours?
No.
No. Okay. So we'll take items number 10 and 11 together. So I believe you all said, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for everything you're doing.
Appreciate you all. Thank you for everything that you're doing as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, you're on mute.
I was just going to say I can't hear anybody.
Sorry. Um, my apologies. These are the technical difficulties we'll run into. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
Well, back to number two, the HUD Continuum of Care Grant.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This is a $4.2 million grant that we get, uh, every year to help deal with our homeless population. It's awarded directly from HUD, federal government, uh, provide homeless housing and services to, and service providers to assist our homeless population. This is one we get every year.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this grant? Uh, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Letterman.
Thank you so much. Thank you TJ. Um, just to re, reemphasize the fact that this is not new money that's coming in. This is money that we consistently have always received year in, year out. Is this a decrease or an increase, uh, TJ?
This actually is, uh, the same level that we get every year. Uh, it's not an increase. But you do make a good point. I'll make sure I point out what is new and what is existing as we go through it because there's three new ones that just came through without any guidance. I'll make sure I point that out, uh, as we go through.
Thank you TJ. I really appreciate that. Just so we, we can clarify where we're, you know, what are we going to, what do we need to work with, with what we have? And then what is out there that is available when it comes down from the federal and the state government? Thank you so much TJ.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To that same point, uh, I recognize this is a grant that we receive each year. Do we know though, uh, in light of recent challenges that are, you know, related to the same population the grant is interpreted to serve? Would any of this be rerouted in any way to respond to the COVID pandemic or is it all pretty much earmarked?
It's a good question. It's all stuff that we're going to continue on with the services of the grant when we apply for the funding and then we're going to apply the new money to be rerouted for the pandemic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Brown, the floor is yours.
Um, I was just curious. Um, I know over at Brockton, they had allocated funding for, um, for, uh, not just the, it was not just the homeless to be more proactive as far as with the actual program with the rents based on the epidemic. Is there anything in place? Are we, are we planning on doing anything people can't pay their actual rent from being displaced?
So, yeah, so those are the conversations we're going to have when, uh, we get the federal guidance as it relates to the new money. This money just exists for, um, helping the, the folks that need it here and the applications that we have. Uh, the new money is just, we, we don't know what the federal government's going to tell us and how, how to spend it or where should we spend. Uh, they're just funding it right now through entitlement programs. So any entitlement grant we get, um, from the CARES Act, they're going to give us additional resources through that.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, TJ, uh, this is a, I realize this is a, we've cut, ongoing grant. Excuse me, this is COVID specific, right?
This one is not COVID specific. This is the usual continuum care grant we get every year.
Alright, so I'm just wondering, uh, speaking, uh, particularly with the homeless, um, can any of this money be used, and I don't exactly know what the plans are, for those people, in this case, but specifically homeless that are diagnosed with COVID-19, um, that are not in the hospital, that are being discharged or can some of this money be used to keep track of them, to see how they're doing, how their health is improving or deteriorating?
So Counsel, this money cannot be used or won't be used with COVID unless we get an amendment through HUD. Uh, this is already spoken for through the programming that we, we do every year, uh, on behalf of the homeless population. We do, we are however, uh, later in the agenda, getting some COVID resources, uh, to address the homeless population as a start. And I can go through that, uh, when we get to that item.
Very well. Thank you TJ.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. If there are no further questions and I do not see any additional hands raised, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number three, I have CBD G20 COVID Recovery Grant, $2,301,793.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So this is one of the ones that, uh, has been, uh, is being sent out to us with the CARES Act, uh, where they increased funding to HUD for multiple grants, the entitlement grants that you receive. Uh, this one specifically is for manufacturing medical supplies, job training for healthcare workers, construction and rehabbing, a public testing and diagnosis treating center, uh, and other services related to the homeless population needs during the pandemic. An economic development system necessary to small businesses. So this is one of the ones that they announced that they have it, we have, we're going to accept it, but they have not announced how we can spend it, uh, how we should spend it. So we're still trying to figure out, uh, the best way to be strategic on how to spend it because, um, you know, for example, we built that, we built the homeless tent for the triage and the testing and the quarantining of, on Worthington Street. If I could use all the money for that, maybe I would. I could figure out if I can use it for services and then we get FEMA money for the tent. So I'm working through all of that stuff now. Um, but this is, I'd rather have us accept it now and then report back to the council what HUD says and how we should spend it. Uh, so we can move, uh, quickly. Uh, so that, once I get more clarity on that, I will report back to the city council.
Thank you TJ. Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Thank you TJ. I guess this is, um, what, uh, Counsel Davila was asking about resources when it comes to specific COVID cases. And, um, one, I want to thank the federal government and the CARES Act and the ones that supported this for us to be able to get this, uh, this money to, uh, to us as soon as they could. Um, I would, once you have the guidelines, like, uh, my question was more on the, on the grounds of, I know that we have set up the tents out there on Worthington Street, but specific to, uh, let's say, because I know a couple of states where we're going into, uh, we're, have their shelter in place. When it comes to our homeless population, if some of this money, once you get the guidelines, if you could get back to me and let me know if we can go into like a, a brick and mortar situation to practice social distancing, because obviously I know that, you know, at Friends of the Homeless is just so big. And maybe we can talk about, um, options of, you know, uh, warming centers or cooling centers that do exist that are municipal, municipally owned that are closed. But, um, like you said, you're still waiting for guidelines on how this money could be spent. I just wanted to, uh, just give a, a little opinion on, you know, and moving forward. I, I'm looking forward to seeing what the guidelines are and how, how the administration is going to, uh, benefit the, the, benefit our residents and our homeless population. Thank you. Oh, my last question, I apologize, Mr. President, is, um, with this, with this money, well, you say you have to wait for the guidelines, particularly to, to, to testing. So, uh, it's more of, I know there was a lack of testing with this money and these guidelines. If you could figure out if, once you know if we can get some, uh, if we're allowed to buy testing or, um, some of those questions pertaining to that because of the lack?
Regardless of this grant, the city has the authority to deficit spend up to $10 million to deal with the pandemic. And so holding up things related to grants isn't, isn't an issue. I know Helen and her shop have done a great job ordering the stuff that they need in terms of, I'm not sure about the testing piece as of yet. Uh, I know, um, Commissioner Calvi and Commissioner Cladbrook, same thing. They're, they're not waiting for grants. We're not going to wait for grants, but we, you know, may reconcile the grants after the fact. We want to make sure we're in the queue because this takes some, some lead time to get the test or lead time to get the PPE. Uh, so we're really working hard to, uh, get that and do it as quickly as possible. And then we'll just kind of figure out the financing later.
Oh, okay. Real quick, my, um, then, do you know, or if you don't know offhand right now, if, because that's the question I guess was for Helen. If, uh, the city of Springfield has, um, um, bought or looking to buy, uh, COVID tests to be able to, you know, uh, test folks in collaboration with other agencies or like Baystate or, or thereof, because I, I'm just, I know that there has been this conversation going around in the state and, and all over, uh, the nation about the lack Because I'm just, I know that there has been this conversation going around in the state and, and all over the nation about the lack of testing. And I, I know she talked about PPE, but necessarily when it comes to testing, I just have a, I'm not really positive on who to ask and what are we doing specific to the city with that? And who's responsible for testing?
So currently, we do not have test kits. Test kits are still at a premium. However, the rapid tests are coming out and it's my understanding that we should have the ability to do testing. If you go down to the site that we built down on Worthington Street, there is a testing tent there. Our hope is that we're able to test individuals there. Also, the way in which those tents are set up, we are set up to do drive-through testing, should that become available. So we've thought about it and we are in the queue to have the ability to test. The challenge is that we do not have the test kits currently.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Brown.
I was just curious, as far as, is there anyone from, is there anyone from the council having any input on where these, you know, with this funding? Where's it going? How it might be used? I mean, I don't think it needs a whole body, but is there anyone, say like we're Adam or he's Economic? Anyone as far as a certain department that we're working, you know, alongside with the administration to see how these actual resources might be distributed?
It's not a conversation I've had with the administration and the mayor. It's something that, once we get guidance from HUD on how they want it to spend, I mean, I definitely will report back to the city council where it is. They might be pretty clear that if you build a shelter, you might need to, or if you build a tent or field hospital, you might need to put it there because that's where your reimbursement would be. Otherwise, you can't get FEMA reimbursement. So that's where we're gonna have to figure out. If they tell me that we can get 75% FEMA reimbursement in spite of this money, I would, I would be more apt to use, be strategic, go after the FEMA resources and put this funding into resources for our homeless population.
Yeah.
So that's what we'll try to figure out. I'll gladly report back to the council in our weekly call to avoid overspending.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. And I was gonna echo the same sentiments as TJ, maybe in our weekly call on Thursdays, that we could also offer suggestions and have an opportunity for input at that meeting as well. But thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think TJ sort of answered the question I was gonna ask. I realized that we still gotta wait for the guidelines accordingly to see how we can spend this money. But if I'm not mistaken, TJ, you just informed us that the city could deficit spend up to $2 million, $10 million due to the COVID-19. So far as I go, unless I have not heard it, I would love to, at some point, maybe down the road, to hear a plan as to how we're doing follow-up with those people who have been tested positive, not only homeless, but in general, to keep track of them and to see their conditions. And it seems like we may have the money to start doing that right away. If there's no plan in place, I will strongly encourage the administration to continue the great job you guys are doing and put forward a plan. If there's a plan that I could hear briefly now, I would love to hear it.
So Counselor, let me answer that question. So as you know, everyone who has a positive test comes through the Board of Health. So we know, based on our database, where the positives are, who is positive, where they live. And so our job, and that's why the state has given us more money, our job is to follow up with each one of those individuals. And right now, I believe we are at 257, if I'm not mistaken. I'll have to look at my book.
In Springfield?
May I get your pardon?
In Springfield?
In Springfield. So as you can see, we have a lot of individuals that we have to follow up with. I can give you that exact number. We were 231 yesterday. I got 33 more today. So that's our number as I sit here right now. And our job is to follow up with all of those individuals, hence the need for enhanced staff.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for TJ, but before I do, I want to ask a follow-up question for Commissioner Holton Harris. When you say, Commissioner, that we have 257 approximately cases in Springfield, are we talking people who reside in the city of Springfield?
That is correct, Counselor. Each Board of Health gets a report from our database called MAVEN. And we go in every day and we pick off the cases. So each Board of Health has their own cases. Those numbers are the city of Springfield alone.
Okay, thank you. My question for TJ is, you know, you and I have talked offline regarding providing more grants to be available for small businesses. Is this something, is this a part of money where we could be able to provide those?
Potentially. There's different things related to small business assistance related to this grant. We just gotta, again, figure out, is it gonna be a grant, a loan, a loan that's ultimately forgiven, and there's a lot of paperwork or bureaucracy or guidance we need to get. So, once I know more, kind of where they encourage it to be spent, we'll be able to figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just kind of want to get a little bit of clarification on what will happen with the money after we approve it here today. So if I'm understanding correctly, TJ, what you're saying is we're gonna approve both accepting and authorizing expenditure of the funds. You're gonna continue to deficit spend in the meantime, and then you're gonna line up the deficit spending, see what is reimbursable by this grant, any other grants, and then see how much is left over?
More or less. So basically, my, my approach to it is gonna be similar, where I'm gonna look at all the funding sources out there and see what makes the most sense in terms of what to fund first. Like, you know, like I said, using the field hospital tent. If I know FEMA is gonna reimburse 75% of that, I'd like to mark all this money for services and other, other things to help, to help our city. But if I'm told that FEMA is paying their last resort, saying, forget it, you're not getting, getting that money for that because you had a chance to use HUD money, then I need to balance that. And that's kind of what I, that's what I need. But we're gonna keep spending and buying what we need and doing what we need to do. The money's gonna start flowing in terms of the recovery piece, and we'll just have to reconcile all funding sources. So my, my hope is at the end of the day, Springfield comes out ahead where we have, you know, services or we can put more money into our small business programs and to other things that our residents need, and then be able to maximize the federal government assistance.
Understood. And I think that flexibility is necessary during the state of emergency. But what I would like to see in the future is maybe there could be a finance committee meeting or something like that, where all of this could be sort of an accounting made, that we could go over and receive a briefing. And then the other two things I would just say, as we consider where to put the funds once all of that is reconciled and we know kind of how much there is out of this particular funding or other funding to spend, is I would, you know, echo the sentiments of my colleagues relative to continuing to look at resources for some of our most vulnerable populations, including the homeless. I think that the field hospital tent is going to be needed. It was an important step and looking forward to see it completed. But I think there, you know, there remains capacity issues in the existing shelters. We know there are still people living on the street because the shelters are at capacity. And, you know, in addition to that, just around the senior outreach, I think the department's doing an excellent job making themselves available to seniors. But I know that if we had expanded resources, there are, you know, additional partnerships we could be making. For example, I know in some other communities, albeit communities that don't have as large a responsibility as us, but we're seeing things like the Council on Aging partnering with food banks and doing grocery delivery and things like that. So just hopeful that we can keep that in our minds. And I know that certainly that's at the forefront of the administration's mind as well. Just wanted to put it on the record here as we discuss the recovery money as it starts flowing in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question was that, Mr., I'm sorry. TJ, you had stipulated about recouping maybe some of that, that spending when it came to the tents. Do we have a dollar amount of how much up to date right now? I know you said that we have spent up to $600,000. But how much of that was initially, or what we have spent up to date right now when it comes to the Worthington Street tents?
So I don't have the numbers directly in front of me. I can get them if you want to wait, but I think it's around $279,000 has been spent on it to date with an anticipated cost of $600,000. We're growing to possibly a million based upon if we need to staff it or provide materials and medical supplies and all the other supplies needed. So the projection I saw this morning, we're talking the tax office, was $605,000 as of today. And that does not include if we need to step up and buy all the supplies and manage that inventory.
All right, thank you, TJ.
Number one more time, I'm sorry.
600, I think he said 650,000?
605 as of today. The projection, 605.
Projected 605, and we have spent 200, two and a half, right?
Yeah, 279 was spent to date. And then given what the rest of the stuff we needed to do and get invoiced for, it's about $600,000.
All right, thank you. I'll, I'll email you and we'll talk more about that. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. If there are no further questions, which I do not see any in the queue, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number five, ESG20 COVID Recovery Grant, $1,163,388.
So this is the second of three funding sources that's coming in from HUD. This one is specifically for the Emergency Solutions Grant for to deal with the homeless population. This is, again, all the same stuff we were just talking about with the field hospital tent that's out there. It's for, you know, all the services you can provide to the homeless population.
Thank you, TJ. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing no hands raised in the queue, all those, Counselor Letterman.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, this is an additional HUD grant, but this one is specifically geared toward homeless population?
Yeah.
And it's how much?
$1,620,000, oh, run on, sorry. $1,163,388.
So what do we anticipate spending this on?
Again, I gotta reconcile all funding sources for all the things. Again, I'm spending a million dollars on a home, a tent for the homeless. Now, I'm getting 1.1 million dollars. Am I gonna be told to make myself whole, or am I gonna be able to be strategic about it? That's what I gotta figure out.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. If there are no further questions, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number six, FY20 Shannon CS Grant in Kind, $1,62,975.90.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
This is a grant, a Shannon grant for the police department. We get it every year. This is an increase of $276,770 of the last year's award. It's to reduce gang-related crime and youth violence throughout the city. And there's 11 sub-producers that are, sub-grantees that are getting funding through this. And the money that we're getting for, for our piece of it is overtime, $223,000 for targeted overtime from the police department, $36,720 for personnel salaries and wages, and then the rest goes up to the outside consultants for $800,167.
Thank you, TJ. Counselor Brown, followed by Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the Shannon grant. This is something that I'm, that we've been having an issue with on the state level, the way that the selection process is done. Are you guys gonna open it back up? Because for some reason, it's only a very selective group of individuals that are, that are better even invited to the table in order to have access. Before, in the past, it was, you were able to submit, you, it was like, you, you just didn't get it. Right now, it's the same people who've been getting it. No one else has been able to be brought to the table. There's new organizations out there that could use this Shannon grant money. Are you guys opening it back up? Or is it something that's gonna be closed to the public basis?
So that is a question I do not have the answer for. I apologize. My understanding is that there is a process, or there was a process for choosing the 11 folks that get it. I'm not sure if that's pre-application or post-application. A few years back, we did post-application awards where they got the money and then we put it out for an RFP. I'll have to check with the police department how they managed it this year.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm very familiar on how it's select. The selection process is something, like I told you, that I've done my homework on, that I've always been very concerned with. This is something that we've been fighting for on the state level. Now that, on this level, I'm just wondering, there is, there is no process where other individuals are brought in to be able to have access to this funding? It was something that a lot of organizations have been complaining to me about. Is that, is that process able to be opened up? Can we change it?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'll look into it for you and report back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor...
Counselor Walsh, my questions are actually very similar to what Counselor Brown just asked. I was wondering, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I was wondering if there are any new recipients because, or if there is a time limit, if the same people have been getting this, because it's a yearly grant, if the same people have been getting it for 10 years, shouldn't there be a new agency that has an opportunity to get it? And I do, I do agree, that's something that we should look into because I think we need to share the wealth, particularly in the environment that we're living in right now.
Glad to look into it.
Well, we heard you say it, and you're on Zoom, so everybody knows you said it.
I can't say, I like the answer, but I'll report back, but I can say, look into it.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who are the 11 sub-grantees at this time?
Yep. Greater New Life Christian Center, Martin Luther King Jr. Community and Family Services, Springfield Boys and Girls Club, Salvation Army, YMCA Dunbar, YWCA, Southend Community Center, Dunbar Y Family and Community Center, Springfield Boys and Girl Club, Springfield Parks and Recreation, Springfield Park and Recreation Department for the Raina School, and the Hand and Ditch Attorney's Office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Ramos.
That was my same question. I wanted to know who the participants were. If there's any way we can get that email to us, that would be great. And also want to reiterate that we would like this process opened up because if it's been 10 years and there's the same participants and our numbers are pretty much the same, then we need to be doing something different. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ, so just if you could clarify for me, is this grant gonna go to the police department? Or is this grant, and they're gonna distribute to 11 other agencies?
Correct. It's a grant that comes from our police department and flows to other agencies that are part of the grant application or process. And I'm gonna look into the process to make sure I have a report back to the city council and understand how they were chosen. You look okay?
So, so then the money goes to the police department, and the police department is gonna disburse this money to the 11 other agencies?
Correct. We will, we will enter into a contract with each of these agencies, and then they will invoice us based upon the services that they arrive.
Right. And it seems like, like it's an ongoing thing, but I'm just trying to think, and adjusting to the realities that we live on. Are these agencies, are they reporting any kind of a decrease in personnel that might affect the bottom line on this? What can this money be used in any other shape or form that adjusts to the realities that we live on?
So I don't know the answer to that because I haven't, I don't know the staffing of these, of these nonprofits and organizations and what they're doing for the pandemic. But if there are funds that are unused, they can be reallocated to repurpose through an amendment process. But I'm not sure exactly for where these organizations stand in terms of their staffing at this time.
So if I understand you correctly, TJ, so if they don't use it, they may have to return the money to the city?
Well, I think I gotta look at the terms of the contract that we're gonna enter into the agreement with them and check out the scope of work and what they're putting out providing. If we're buying a certain level of service as part of this grant and they don't provide it, you know, we need to make sure that we understand it.
I agree, especially, especially to understand that we're gonna need, as you know better than us, that we can recoup all the... I agree, especially, well, especially to understand that uh we're gonna need, as you know better than us, that we can, need to recoup all the money we can um during this crisis. So, um thank you, TJ.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Allen.
Uh yes, thank you, uh Mr. President. I'm just following along the same line as everybody else. We just heard the uh agencies that are going to receive the funding, but would we also know what agencies applied and were rejected? It'd be interesting to find out.
So I just sent an email to uh Jennifer Wyden, just to get the information on the process by which they use for the funding, and I will report that back to the City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Allen.
Get on your self, Tim. Not, you're good now.
Okay. Uh relative to the Shannon grant, I was pretty close to that for a while when the Mayor's Violence Prevention Task Force was going on. Um that grant and the Safe and Secure Communities Youth Grant, I'm not sure I've got that name right, but every year we would um they would come before the council, and we would do our best to decipher the questions that are being asked right now. And there was always someone who coordinated it. I can't remember the guy, retired a few years ago. I can't remember his name, but it was his job to coordinate Shannon, et cetera. Then there was, I think, somebody from Dunbar named John Lewis, if I'm not mistaken. And there's um, anyway, there's usually someone that you can call on who was kind of the point person. On the police, it was Brian Elliott for the longest time. Um so maybe it would be good to be able to, besides find out the process, TJ, but to get them uh to meet with the council or something, 'cause there was usually a dialogue. There always, these questions came up every year. But there was usually a point person that would help work through the process with us.
Understood.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, Counselor Brown.
Um I would just wanna reiterate one more time to my colleagues that um there is no process. So if I was a nonprofit organization, say um Ayana Crawford has a, 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 a program for inner-city ki, girls. Um she would never ha, know when it's coming out. She wouldn't be, she wouldn't be able to apply for it. It's, it's not open. Um there's no access to it. I've ju, that, that was one of our main concerns, that there is no way where you can go as a different agency if you're not one of those eleven and say, hey, we wanna access. So the answer to the question is, to see the people who aren't accepted, there isn't anyone who's not accepted because um they're not even allowed to submit for the application itself. They're not brought to the table. So I'm just wondering, is that process gonna change? Because in the past, it was opened up. Now it is, it, it, it hasn't been opened up for forever, for a while, for a long time.
As I mentioned in my previous statements, I will get to it and get back to the City Council.
Counselor Ramos. Thank you, Counselor Brown.
Yeah, thank you, uh Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Brown, for bringing that up. I think that's a, you know, a very valid point. Um TJ, what is, what is the uh, what does the notification look like right now? When um, when we accept applications as a city, how do we advertise that we're accepting applications?
So that's what I gotta look into. So we're not legally allowed to give money to a nonprofit without going through a process. Um and then sometimes when you get direct awards as a sub-grantee, you are part of the grant application to the state, and that's how you're named an awardee. I'm checking if that's the way we did it for this, but it sounds like we got away from the post-award RFP process uh that we used to do. And so I don't know the answer to exactly how we got these eleven into the queue, uh but legally, we need a process of where we can give money to a nonprofit.
Well, sorry, can you repeat that last part?
Legally, we cannot give money to a nonprofit uh if we do not have a process by which, uh, uh, an open process.
Yeah.
Now, the way, the two ways I'm familiar with for grants is one, all the entities get together with one person uh coordinating the grant and apply one application with, with the city and sub-grantees. And the other is, apply for gra, uh say it's Shannon, you get it, it's a million dollars, and then you go out and say, we now have seven hundred and fifty thousand we're gonna spend on uh sub-granties, let's take it in an RFP process. Does that make sense? So what I understand is, we used to do the RFP post-award, and to say, okay, we got X number of dollars available, give us your um applications and tell us what you're gonna spend it. Um but it sounds like, and I don't know the answer to this, is we did it the way where it's, hey, we're gonna write a grant with all these people in it, and then that's how we get it. So should that change? Probably. Um do I have the answer for it tonight? No, I will know better when I talk to the police department to say, how did we, how did we settle on these sub-granties? And once I know how we settled, if it was one-on-one, hey, we give it to them every year, and that's just the way we do it, well, then we're gonna look at that process and try to develop a, a better way to do it.
Can you give us an idea or of some, uh, can you give us an idea, a timeline of how you can get that information to us? Uh we don't wanna overwhelm you. I, I know that there are a lot of other things going on, but just so we have an idea as to why we can get that information.
Literally, Lindsay and I just reached out to Jennifer Wyden as we were on this uh call, on this Zoom, and as soon as I get an answer back, I will pass it on to the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um TJ, if we approve this money today, ju, is it going to these eleven? Or we still have to choose, or if we, if we open up the process, will that be effective next fiscal year? Like, are these the chosen ones for this particular money at this particular time?
That is my understanding, uh based upon um the grant award. I'm not sure we can open it up uh after the fact or however it worked, but I certainly will look at that as well.
So I, that's something we kinda need to know, right? These are the eleven that's getting it, so it's not gonna be opened up for this particular round. It, that's, that's the correct understanding. I do, I'm just trying to be clear.
Oh no, I understand. I, uh Counselor, I understand exactly where you're coming from. Uh I don't have the answer to no, a hundred percent. I don't, I mean, it sounds, it seems to me as the grant was written with these entities in mind, and I don't know if they'll let us open it up. I just don't know the answer to that. I know exactly what you're saying, and I know what you, what you're looking for, and I can do my best to get it for you in a short, a short time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Davila.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Sorry.
So um uh TJ, just a pencil, it's a quick, it's, it's just a quick suggestion. If you can also uh ask that uh person that you're reaching out to uh geographically when it comes to the organization, 'cause I wanna see what parts of Springfield, specific to this Shannon grant, uh knowing what are the stipulations on what it's for, um what areas of the, of the communities are getting the most money. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh TJ, um are we any, are we any kind of time constraint to accept this grant?
To accept it?
Yes.
I mean, I guess technically no, but I don't wanna turn away grant money from the Commonwealth, um so.
Right. No, I never, I never give away free money myself, of course, but.
Although it's fine, 'cause it's like, so, the way we look at it, uh and this is what, what we're, what we're preparing for uh under the fact that we're heading into a recession. Is that Commonwealth is gonna call back any unspent grants, that is, the Commonwealth is gonna call back any, uh, any unspent grants to stop shoring up the check on time. Sorry about that. This uh TV shuts off every forty minutes. I don't know why, so if we're not paying attention, it's just gonna shut it down, and that would be a disaster to get hooked up again, so.
This is my exercise.
So any doing laps around is not just to influence that fund. Uh no, so what we wanna do, so I get, the, the grant deadline, they want you to usually spend the money by the end of the fiscal year, so otherwise they can go far back. And in the, in the fiscal times we're having right now, um we're trying to instruct our department now to spend your odd pots of money first, preserve the general fund, uh and then um try to make sure we're being strategic, and that's what the state's gonna do too. Let's call back all grants that are unspent. Let's call back everything we can get, bring it back into our general fund. And then um, so we're trying to get it encumbered, and uh the drawdown's happening, so.
Right, right.
Interesting. I don't know if I answered your question, but.
Right. No, no, I understand. You never give away free money, but uh again, I do think uh my colleagues bring up some excellent points, uh particularly that it's always the same people get it every ten years. It's disturbing, and we really need to find out why that is, what it, why that is happening. Uh again, just to reemphasize my point, uh and which I'm sure you're gonna look into, if there's any way that we can recuperate the money that is not used uh for the city due to the uh coronavirus crisis, uh it will be a win-win for the city. Thank you, TJ.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Allen.
Uh my, my question is just along the lines of everybody else's, which is, can we accept the grant without accepting the allocations that have been previously, that, that TJ just.
At this point, if the grant award is for us and those sub-grantees, there's probably not much we can do. Um but that's the way they went about it. So I, but I do have to look into it for you.
Okay.
Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna also caution that um aside from our questions, that we, we really wanna open this up and get this uh um this money uh to other organizations or be, make it available for them, that there is stipulations specific to this money. So if we were to get this money back or, or recoup some of this money, um that money would realistically still have to go in a direction of what the money was allocated to the city for. Uh secondly, um if we um, if we don't allocate this money or accept this grant, what, what in, when it, in, in adding some of these nonprofits, this money is to uh fulfill some of their programming, and also maybe they were counting on this money, and I know it's, I think they weren't counting on it as new money, but fiscally this year, and under the COVID and the crisis that's going on, we're gonna be affecting people's jobs and, and probably uh that are looking for, to, to get paid, and I, I would hate for that to be a reason why we couldn't allocate some of this money. I know that we have a strong sense of uh what we wanna open up, but I just wanna, you know, just put that in our, yeah, put that into the, into the pot to think about if some folks, you know, don't wanna uh accept this grant and that allocation to go down. That money does matriculate down to our communities and turns into jobs, and if that job, if that money is, is forward to it um for the rest of this fiscal year to, to, to do some programming or stuff, even though we're in, at home, it could suffer from um other people's employment, and that's all. Um that's all I wanted to, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Whitfield, on the grant.
This is my final comment. Um TJ, I hope this money is upplanted and covering people's jobs. I don't know if it can be written into the grant that this money can be used for um e, um employees, because most grants you can't, well, not most, some grants you can't supplant for programs that's already going on with other, with grant money. So I'm not sure if that's the case, but I do wanna say that I don't think we should hold this money up. I think we should approve it and then look at um updating the process going forward, because we are in a crisis. We need the money, and going forward, we can look at it for the next term. We get this money every year, and we can look at, we have a whole year to figure out a process for the next time that it comes along, but we should never hold up any money, so I will just let you answer the supplanting question, and then that, that's my final comment. I'm going to um move forward with approving the grant because we have time to work on the process.
So guys, I agree with you about the process. Uh we definitely wanna look at the process, as I hear uh the council loud and clear. As far as the planting, we're not allowed to supplant funds, so uh if this funded through something else, and that um this has to be for a scope of work agreed upon with the city, it has deliverables and other, the products, the services they're providing. Um but eh, you know, next year, let's look at the process.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Seeing that there are no other hands in the queue, I just wanna apologize to uh, to my colleagues. If I'd have known this meeting was going to go as seamlessly, as seamlessly uh as it's been going thus far, that I would have had somebody from the police department to uh, to speak to this grant via Zoom. I did wanna make sure that um I didn't mean to put you on the spot either, TJ, but I wanted to make sure that we did approve this money, but I did know that there would be a lot of questions, and so uh being that, you know, we're, we're running pretty smoothly here, and it seems like everybody has a handle on it for next month when we start to approve grants. Uh if there are any grants in which people see early on that they would like individuals to be in attendance at, to the extent we can, I don't wanna make it too convoluted considering the circumstances, but if there are significant ones like these that you see in advance, just let me know, and I will ensure that those individuals have downloaded the Zoom application and can speak uh to each of these grants. So um just, just be mindful of that in the future. Since there are no further questions, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number eight. Excuse me, but I don't know why, but every time I uh s, say aye, I don't think it's being recorded, so.
I, I hear you, Kateri.
Yeah, thank you. I hope everyone else does.
Um uh Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Yes. Item number eight, HAPWA twenty COVID recovery grant, one hundred and one thousand and three dollars.
So this is uh one of the CARES Act stimulus funding. This is for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, HAPWA. Uh it's provide housing assistance and related services to homeless people, uh persons living with HIV/AIDS.
Thank you, TJ. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this grant? Counselor Gomez?
Bye.
This, this specific grant is extra to the HAPWA grant that we already received, 'cause it's uh obviously that COVID's attached to it. And it's go, those same uh that we already work with specifically to this uh um, to this uh traffic of folks, right?
I am not, I'm sorry, TJ. Full guidance yet, so I'm not a hundred percent sure. It was how it came into the system. Right, it's allocated under the formula for entitlement grant, but I'm not sure if it has to go to the same exact um resources in the same exact uh way they spend it now. So once I get additional guidance, I will report back to the council.
All right, no problem. Thank you, TJ.
Can I just remind councilors, I'm hearing a little background, so I'd imagine that the TV and Focus Springfield are picking that up as well. So if you could please mute your mics when you are not speaking, it would be greatly appreciated. Uh if, seeing that there are no further questions, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I wait you for you.
Heard you, Kateri, heard you.
Heard you.
The ayes have it, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number nine, homeless COVID nineteen grant, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Counselors, this is our grant from the federal government to deal with COVID nineteen. Uh most of this money, I just uh signed a P O for twenty-one thousand for medication for um the homeless population. So it is uh specific to COVID nineteen and medication that might be necessary for the health center population.
Commissioner, I feel terrible that I still kept you here for this, this last grant. I wish.
Well, you know, I'm happy to be here, as we know.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this grant? Say none. All those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Say nay. The ayes have it, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call items number ten and eleven together?
Item number ten, M O P, M O A P C, um grant twenty-five thousand. Now, item number eleven, donation of goods, fifty glasses, police department.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number twelve, uh order authorization expenditure, F Y twenty, Chapter ninety fund, three million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
So thank you, Mr. President. This uh is the annual Chapter ninety allocations that we get from the state. It's a hundred percent reimbursable for views on uh road sidewalks and other uh upgrades for our roads, our streets program. And two-point-seven million of it's gonna go to arterial and residential construction, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand to design, and then we offset uh two hundred thousand dollars of the salaries uh to the grant. There was, or is a preliminary list that uh Chris and Owen, the D B W, put out uh as part of the attachment for the order. I don't know if there are any questions.
Thank you, TJ. Counselor Ramos.
Thank you. Uh TJ, um couple of questions. First, uh you called it a preliminary list. When will we know whether or not um this will, this is the permanent list?
Uh so I have the preliminary list, it's the only one I. Uh, so I have the preliminary list. This is the only one I, I've seen, uh, what, when, uh, the DPW was thinking. I have no idea if there's other ones that may get swapped in or swapped out. Uh, I can follow up with Chris and Goli on that if you want, Mike.
And so, w- if, if one gets swapped in or swapped out, um, I'm assuming, um, you know, I think I've seen this in the past where if there's a conflict with some, some additional work that needs to be done, then that street will be postponed for, for a later date until that work is completed. Um, but then how, how would we know what streets are going to be swapped in and swapped out?
Uh, probably have to have a, uh, meeting with the Major Development Committee, Chris and Goli, to talk about, uh, what changes are made to this preliminary list and if we have them, uh, we'll back to the council saying, hey, due to the fact that Columbia Gas is doing road work on this road, we have to push that off next year. Uh, and then we'll, in lieu of that, we're going to do this street or sidewalk.
Now, my, uh, final question, um, considering everything that's going on, when do we anticipate beginning the work for these roads?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, to get that back to you, when it starts, they, the, the, um, pit just opened up at SOGS, its facility to do roads and streets. So I'll have to, they have the direct answer to that question.
Um, as you know, the building trades have sent out a request of the governor to post, to shut down all construction, uh, across the Commonwealth. Uh, the governor has yet to do that, but I think that one of the recommendations, um, uh, are, one of the things that other communities are doing, even when they're shutting down construction, is that they're leaving it open for essential, um, emergency projects. I'm not certain whether or not this qualifies, but even, but if there's a, if there's a, a temporary shutdown, are we still on, on path to be able to get some of these roads done this year?
Uh, I guess the question is how long is the shutdown? How long is it going to last? We don't know.
So, uh, Counselor, the governor, uh, narrowed the list of, uh, essential jobs, particularly in the construction field. Uh, designated what construction was essential and what construction was not. So for example, construction on the new ballpark in Worcester, uh, would not fall under essential, uh, under the new guidance issued, uh, from the state. However, road construction, school construction, those are, um, and, and, um, general public works to, uh, uh, for utility, where utilities are involved, those are still deemed essential under the, uh, uh, new guidance and orders from the governor.
And you said they were issued when?
That came out, um, Thursday or Friday, last Tuesday, it was last Thursday.
Okay.
I, I can send that to you if you want.
That'll be great. Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, TJ, is this, um, a level funding or increased or decreased?
This is a level funding, I believe. It's definitely not an increase. So we were hoping for an increase and it came back as the amount we get every year. So.
Every year, but it could be like a e- increase later on.
Yeah, so, uh, so, um, recent years, they've, they've done additional allocations through the formula, uh, when they have, when they've authorized enough debt for the Commonwealth. Um, so if they do that again, we're just going to increase in, in the amount.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield and Counselor Brown.
I'm just curious, is, is there a way you can get, get the information to us, um, the actual areas where their service, it being serviced? Um, because I would just be curious as far as, um, how many road repairs going to be done in my district and Ward Four? Um, and making sure, um, is there, if we, if we find some area, because there's certain roads and certain people's area where we're seeing that they're hectic and maybe dangerous, um, if we wanted to put in input as far as being able to have that put on a list, how would we go about it? Could we go about it?
So there is a list attached to the order and minute track and that's part of your agenda, uh, to go about it. Uh, we have to have a conversation with Chris and Goli to see, um, because he's got a whole process by which they get onto the list. So let's see, make sure that we understand the process by which, um, and the road that needs to be repaired and where, where it falls, falls in terms of the big picture that Chris has.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to just chime in a little bit and give a little bit more insight to, uh, my colleague, uh, um, Counselor Brown. Uh, on the minute track that we're given, that's on our iPads, if you haven't seen it, um, there is a list, um, that is broken down three. There's three lists there. One of the, one of the, those were the lists we were talking about in the beginning with paving of residential streets, um, also, uh, milling and paving of art, um, of arterial streets. Then there's another one that's eligible for area sidewalk repairs and replacement. And before, um, you, before you were, uh, elected to the body, this is something that the body has consistently have dove in and talked to, uh, Chris and Goli about because there's, I, I know this is not the answer that you want to, you want to hear. Neither do we, but there's a list that some people have been waiting fifteen years, fifteen strong years to get their sidewalks fixed. If the street isn't deemed hazardous or an emergency, if there was a water main or something like that broken, you can look between in this, because even in my ward and District One, I was going through the list now and I seen, you know, a lot of streets that I wish that would be on this list that aren't on them. And I know a lot of board councillors and councillors know what I'm talking about, but just to answer a little bit of that, we, we need a lot more, uh, when it comes to, uh, these Chapter 90 funds and we just need to keep on fighting and, and, and support our state delegation to try to advocate for these state funds. So I just wanted to just, just, just give you a little bit of information. To get on that list, um, contact Chris and Goli. But also on that list, some of these places will wait, will wait about fifteen years without, was give or take what he gave me. That's paving and also sidewalks. Just to give you, uh, just a little bit of information that we've have been, since I've been on the council for since 2015, I've been here, fifteen-year wait, unacceptable.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Ramos.
Sorry, TJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, areas that are covered by CDBG are eligible for, uh, we're, we're able to use CDBG money for sidewalks in those areas, correct?
Correct.
And this list, this Chapter 90 money is, uh, the sidewalks that are on this list are areas that are not covered by CDBG?
Uh, there was a section that identified CDBG eligible, base bid number two, CDBG eligible areas. Um, that's in addition to whatever, uh, Chris and Goli may get from CDBG funding.
Okay. And how, how are we doing with our, we have an in-house sidewalk crew now. And so how is that sidewalk crew doing at the moment? And have we been able to address that backlog that we have, um, on sidewalks?
It's my understanding that they are doing well and they're starting to address it, but I think like Counselor Gomez pointed out, it's such a long list. Uh, we're trying to, uh, get through it, but it's definitely, uh, huge to have. And I can get some numbers, uh, to the council from Chris on the success of the program, kind of how much we've been able to attack the list.
And where does the money come from when we, when we use our in-house crew to do sidewalks? Wh- where does the money come from? Is that the general fund?
It's general funding for the salaries, general fund for the supplies and materials.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Dabila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a clarifying question, if I may, for TJ. Um, looking over the paperwork and on the, it says Department of Public Works, uh, Fiscal Year 2021 Improvement Program, and it goes base bid one, two, uh, three. Uh, it says, uh, base bid number three, overfunded sidewalk repairs and replacement. And then they use a description of these sidewalks and streets that are going to be fixed and along with the, uh, footage that's going to be done. Um, what is that? Is that money coming from, from this sort of over allocation or tax?
So, uh, allocation or, uh, fee that's tacked on to, uh, Uber or, uh, ride sharing program, they, they add a fee and then it comes directly to the city for road improvement projects.
And do we have a, so the total for this is three million, six hundred and eighty-one, seven hundred and thirty-seven for the total, uh, order. But I was just wondering, do you know how much we get from Uber, uh, on that allocation?
So do you know, hold me on the number because I, I think it's from memory, but I want to say it's around sixty-five thousand dollars. So it's not a huge source. I will get the actual number. I was surprised it was so low.
All right. Thank you, TJ.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. I see no more hands in the queue. So if everybody could just unmute their mics so that we can have an official vote, it would be greatly appreciated. Madam Clerk, this requires a roll call, majority vote for passage. Can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Oh, yes.
Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corrin?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, Aston, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards? Counselor Edwards?
Is.
Counselor Edwards is muted.
Counselor Edwards, I'll unmute him, sorry. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
The vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Earth?
Yes. All those in favor of suspending Rule 19 and taking this order up in one vote, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, the ayes have it, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number thirteen, budget transfer within a department, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen-three million, one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and twenty cents. My apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, to the, to the council. So this is our annual, uh, spring cleanup and beautification that Pat Sullivan does throughout the city. Uh, it's going to be a transfer from salary savings that he has in his account. Uh, we think it's a good time to show the residents that we're, uh, still all working and running the city and doing what we can for our residents, sends a nice, sends a strong message. And so, uh, as soon as the transfer is done, Pat will start.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
I don't have any.
Counselor Dabila.
Uh, just a quick clarifying question. TJ, uh, I see here that this money is coming from salaries, um, that's being transferred to the arts.
So we've got a number of vacant positions in our forestry division. Uh, so we finally figured out, uh, what we have to do on that side to get people hired. Uh, so the savings, uh, we are now reinvesting those savings into the beautification project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Saying none, this requires a roll call, majority vote for passage. If everyone could please unmute their mics. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corrin?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, Aston, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Earth?
Yes. All those in favor of suspending Rule 19 and taking this order up in one vote, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number fourteen, budget transfer across the department, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars.
Thank you, Mr. President, to the council. Though this transfer of forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars is from our reserve contingency line item to the school department. This will bring us in compliance with net school spending requirements. Um, when we, when we estimated the Schedule 19 portion of net school spending, which is city services and support of schools, uh, we had one estimate, DESI, the actual calculation after the budget is adopted. Uh, so they did the calculation and we were off by forty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, so we're requesting, uh, the transfer to the school department to make their department funded at required contribution.
Thank you. TJ, are there any questions or comments from the council? Saying none, this requires a roll call, majority vote for passage. Madam Clerk, if everybody can unmute their mic, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez. Counselor Gomez.
Yeah.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corrin?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, Aston, Counselor Letterman?
Yes. Uh, Allen.
Counselor Allen?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Earth?
Yes. All those in favor of suspending Rule 19 and taking this order up in one vote, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
I have here item number fifteen, budget transfer within a department, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Well, I apologize. On the last one, it was a two-thirds roll call vote. We, we didn't have an issue, so we will, we will. Sorry. TJ?
So, uh, thank you, Mr. President. So this grant, uh, grant, sorry. Uh, this transfer is to go, is to go from salary savings into the forestry department so they can actually, uh, address, uh, more dead and dangerous trees, a backlog of dead and dangerous trees to find them addressed. And so we figured it makes sense to let them, uh, do a little extra when we had some savings.
Thank you, Counselor Allen.
I, I didn't have a question on this. I just, but on the previous one, I just didn't know if TJ could tell us how much is left in that contingency line item.
Uh, that is a good question. I think this is the first transfer we've done out of that contingency line item. Uh, but I can, I can get that back to you. Unfortunately, I should have had that. Sorry about that.
All right, no problem. All right, no question on this one.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Sorry, I did see your hand up. Um, are there any other questions or comments on this grant?
No.
Sorry, on this, this, uh, on this transfer, my apologies. Saying none, this requires a roll call, majority vote for passage. If everybody could unmute your mic. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corrin?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, Aston, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Earth?
Yes. All those in favor of suspending Rule 19 and taking this order up in one vote, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number sixteen, a budget transfer within a department, twenty-nine seventy-five thousand.
Uh, sorry, to answer your question, uh, related, sorry about that. Two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand is left in the contingency account, uh, after that transfer.
Two-twenty-seven?
Yeah, two, two-twenty-seven, two-ninety-seven, being precise.
Thank you.
Uh, for this order, so the, uh, DPW enterprise fund is showing the surplus in salaries and wages. Um, and then they actually have a lot of additional expenses related to, um, uh, the contractors, temporary contracts they had to bring in to do leaf pickup, they had to do, when they bought new trucks, uh, new arms trucks that broke, they had to buy three of those. Uh, so there's, yeah, an unbudgeted purchase of three arms of automatic trash trucks, that's fifty-six thousand. Uh, also large-scale vehicle repairs in accidents and the surplus is related to work in, the surplus in the enterprise fund is related to worker cases of people being paid out of a separate OTBS account. Uh, so those savings are needed to fund, uh, the four mentions.
Counselor Whitfield?
I'm glad to, thank you, Mr. I'm glad to, thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad to see that the money is reinvested into the department, TJ, but you said there was a lot of salary savings. Are there a lot of vacancies in the DPW department?
There are an abnormal number of vacancies. The issue that we have is we have a lot of folks that are on workers' comp due to the nature of the job, and that's what drives the savings, the trust to transfer in, and then we also have to put money into workers' comp to actually pay those folks, but that's really what the driving force was.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Councillor Allen, followed by councillor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, TJ, relative to the enterprise fund, regular DPW budget, is it typical for us to be moving money between the two like this, or?
So, this, everything in the enterprise fund has to stay in the enterprise fund, so this is just keeping it and putting it in the right places from salaries to OTPS.
Okay. Do we, okay, thank you.
Councillor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ, can you tell us what the workers' comp liability is on part of this?
Workers' comp liability out of this?
Yeah, you said some of this one's going to be.
And we're going to exceed $140,000 through the workers' compensation claims in this department, in this enterprise fund, sorry. So, that's significant, more than we normally pay. So, $90,000 is the workers' comp, so that's how many people are getting hurt doing the job.
So, other 275,000, 140,000 is going to be for workers' comp?
90,000, because it's 90,000 above what we budgeted for a total of 140,000.
Okay. All right, thank you, TJ.
Any no other questions from councillors or comments? If we could all unmute our mics, madam clerk, this requires a roll call, majority vote for passage. Can you please call the roll?
Councillor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Corrin?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Ramis?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Williams. Aston councillor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Earth?
Yes, all those in favor of suspending Rule 19 and taking this order up in one vote, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next on the agenda?
Item number 17, other granting a guest easement to Bay State Gas Company doing business as Columbia Gas of Massachusetts. Its successors are assigned for the Bradwood and Lincoln School Project.
I can talk to that. If we want to have gas service at the school, we got to give an easement to the gas company to bring the pipeline.
Solicitor, are there any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Letterman?
Thanks, solicitor. We have an idea of what, are they just bringing the pipe off of the main service that's already there into the school?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor Letterman. Councillor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. More of a question, obviously, we need the gas, but I just, I hope that these guys are going to be working out there in this crisis, that they are going to be taking the proper precautions for themselves. Is that something that we are requiring as well?
I think the governor requires that, yeah.
Well, this time, I don't assume anything. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davila. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? This requires a roll call, majority vote for passage. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councillor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Davila? Councillor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Corrin?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Ramis?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Williams. Aston councillor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Earth?
Yes, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the final item on the agenda this evening?
Item number 18, order approving contract over three years for Smart 911 software.
Mr. President, to the council, so Emergency Communications Dispatch has a contract with Smart 911 that expires this year, and they gave us options to do three-year or five-year, the five-year renewal, as those cost-effective. It would be 31,500 a year, it goes down to 29,925 if you lock in for five years, and it's considered sole source, since we've had the software in the city, and we just ask for a five-year authorization.
Thank you. TJ, are there any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Finn?
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ, have we, is this option on the contract to extend for another five years, or will we have to go out for RFP with this?
No, the procurement department said that since we have it, proprietary, sole source, I don't know if you know if you're familiar with what the software is, is I get to call up or go to Smart 911 and put all my family's information that I have, you know, a pet, you know, three kids, all the stuff that you're willing, if I have, you know, pre-existing health conditions you want somebody to be aware of, to put all that into the system. So, when police, fire, EMS show up, they know what they're looking for, what they're getting themselves into. Because of that, they've determined it's sole source, they don't have to go back out for an RFP.
Okay. In light of that, I'm fine with it.
Councillor Davila?
Yeah, TJ, I vaguely recall, you might have been talking about this in one of the past meetings, but the reason we're going from three years to five years is for savings? Is that going to be?
Small savings and continuity. I think the more we market the Smart 911 technology, the better off it is for our residents.
Thank you, TJ.
Councillor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was going to ask how we're marketing it now, and if we know how many, how long has it been in place, and how many signups have we had? Do we know that? I support it, but I'm just curious.
I can get that pretty soon.
Yeah, I'd just be curious, because I, to be honest with you, I think I've heard of it, but not regularly, and so it seems like a great service, and it might be good to have Jeremy do some sort of maybe PSA or something to Focus Springfield and just get the word out a little more.
Definitely.
Thank you, councillor Letterman. Are there any other comments from the council? Seeing none, this requires a roll call, majority vote for passage. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Corrin?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Ramis?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Williams. Aston councillor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Earth?
Yes, the order is approved. Before we close this evening, I just want to give a special thanks to the solicitor, as well as TJ, and then also to Focus Springfield. Those of you might not know, but there's been a tremendous amount of behind-the-scenes work that has happened just to make this a reality, and so I appreciate the work of Focus, as well as the administration for pulling this one off. In addition to my colleagues, I don't think I can stress enough the fact that we were able to assemble 12 councillors and, but for a passing, it would have been 13 remotely, is just an amazing feat, and puts us far ahead of any other municipality or town in this city. So, I want to thank you all. It's also important for the public to know who is not, is not sitting on their hands during this time of crisis, and that we are actually conducting business on behalf of the residents. So, I am greatly appreciative to all of you, and knowing that all of you are going to continue to advocate on behalf of your constituents during this time of crisis is something that I think they need to know. So, thank you again, madam clerk. Is there any further business before the council, before we depart this evening? Councillor Letterman, it looks like you have a question.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, and I think I speak for all our colleagues, thank you to you for your work coordinating this and working together with our partners at Focus Springfield and the administration to make sure that we have this opportunity.
Thank you, councillor Letterman. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, and I will let the council know, I see a lot of thumbs up, you guys are getting, you guys are really cute with the technology here. So, I appreciate it, and with that said, the objective and the desire is to have a hearings meeting for the Monday, the 27th. We're going to try and pull it off, so stay tuned. I will get back to you guys in terms of the time, but as of right now, the expectation is that we will have a hearings meeting on Monday, the 27th.